Sir, 6:05 PM roll call. Mayor Baker, if you have to receive. We're here. Commissioner Gotti is going to be the lead guest. Commissioner McGuire.
Yes.
Fred, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Need a motion to accept the minutes of the last meeting?
I'll move.
Mark? Second. I'll second it.
Mayor Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Stever, yes? Commissioner McGuire.
No.
What does not pass?
Yeah, that's fine. We'll get it when he comes back. Commissioner reports.
Can I just ask a question real quick? Commissioner McGuire? Now, that's two weeks in a row, two months in a row, and that's fine. Except I don't know why. You never really express why.
Okay, because there was a lot of things missing in the minutes that were said at the meeting.
But meetings are not, minutes are not a transcript of the meeting.
Okay, there's a whole conversation missing.
Okay.
I know it doesn't have to be verbatim, but there's a lot of things missing.
Okay.
It's not a correct record.
My report, just proceeding with some work. We've got a lot done on the water project. They're boring up on Route 67 to bring the county line down. So we're moving along. It's coming. That's all I have. Mark?
There's a couple of things. We, the water bills are out to do the end of this month. We gave two, two, two months to pay, obviously, this time around. It's still a little slow. There's 700 or so I'm still outstanding, so I'm assuming next two weeks it's gonna be pretty busy. And there is one thing I want to say. At the last meeting, Commissioner McGuire asked me about the water bill and about whether E on the water bill represents estimate. And when I answered the question, I thought I was correct. I said, yes, it does. It's an estimated bill. Well, I was, next day I went back to the office and, you know, did some checking, and the fact is that there is no E's on any of these bills. When we estimate a bill, we do it manually. If you allow the computer to do it, what happens is it goes back over the last three cycles, and let's say you had a reading of 4,000 cubic feet, and let's say it leak, it'd be 10,000 cubic feet, and another 4,000 cubic feet. It would add those three together and, and, and give you an average, and that would be your estimated bill. Well, if someone takes care of a leak, we don't really want to penalize them for the leak, so we go back over three similar cycles. In other words, three winter cycles or three spring, summer cycles to get the estimate. And we do that manually. So I just want to apologize to the commissioner because I did make, make an error. I thought I was correct at the time, but I was not.
But I think you specifically said that there was bills that were estimated.
There are.
You know it.
No, there are bills estimated.
And that they had an E on them.
I know, I'm telling you, I made a mistake.
All right.
All right, I apologize. That's it. Sorry for being late, everybody.
Oh, I forgot one thing. I wanted to introduce our new city attorney. This is Lynn Murphy. She comes to us with pretty good credentials, and we're hoping that our relationship with all the council and Lynn and everyone goes well. Anthony?
Yes, sir.
Do you have anything for Commissioner Reports?
Just a couple of quick things. Give me a second to read through here. But I just wanted to go over a couple of things. Let's base it on a few things. I'm hearing things about storm drains and stuff around the city, and I just want to say, we have effectively been working on storm drains for the last two years. We've raised quite a few of them. Saratoga Avenue, a lot of them, as you already saw, but they're slated to be repaired. But it's kind of hard staying on top of them all, especially when you're reactive and not proactive. And without enough staff, it's kind of hard to stay proactive. If I dedicate two guys out there, it shortens my staff. Number one. Number two, we were very successful up at the water plant. We had really good progress with the line that's coming down from Saratoga. It's very, very close now. We're doing very well there. They're starting to work behind the plant a little bit, and we've got a few things going on there as far as, one of the other things that just recently came off is trees in Ten Nada Hall Park. A lady was able to recently provide me and Jim Herkel with documentation showing that the property in front of those homes, which we were all under the impression, which Jim was also, that this property was the homeowner's. It isn't. It's city-deed property. So basically, the cleaning up we're doing over there is basically maintenance that we're doing on our own stuff. And as far as that goes, I really don't know how, well, I'd just like to say one thing too is for Alex, he's not here, but I wanted to give him a shout out for helping me with that trash down at the docks. We were able to get some cans down there and get away from the old barrels, and with him helping out and being a little bit more present down there, we were able to get, County Ways to go down there and start dumping them for us ourselves instead of us going down and doing it with a backhoe. That was a big plus. And other than that, the stepped-up patrol down at Ten Nada Hall, that's been very beneficial also. We had less problems with the picnic tables down there than we were having with the help of Billy and his staff. Other than that, that's about it.
Commissioner McGuire?
There was problems with the picnic tables down there?
Yeah, the kids were graffitiing them and other things. But I think with the presence down there, I know I've seen Officer Abram down here twice today doing property checks, so that's working out really well.
All right. All right, so I was in touch with someone who had a campaign to do 518 Backs Their Blue, which is acknowledgement of police officers and police departments, and just letting them know that we support them and we're in favor of a police department. So I reached out to her and with a couple people from town, we put together bags, brought them to our police department as well as Still Waters, just to let them know that we appreciate everything they do and they are important to us. So it was myself, Carol Zaleski, Kim Dunn, Mary Lou Cibula, Kim Noonan, and my daughter Madison, and we made up 30 bags for the Mechanical and Stillwater Police Departments, and then we delivered them on June 25th and 26th. And these bags were in appreciation for all that they do and to show our support for our local police officers now and always. And I would like to give a special thank you to those who donated generously so that our officers would be recognized, and that's Zales Auto Body, Weaver Petroleum, Lorenzo Construction, Quick Response, Val's Sporting Goods, and Val's wrote a personal note on each gift that they gave the cops. It was very nice. Lucille Lorenzo, Mary Lou Cibula, Kim Dunn, Kim Noonan, Carol Zaleski, and Madison McGuire. And we also have blue ribbon for any resident that wants, that asks. We'll put a blue ribbon, a bow on their porch or around a tree, also in an effort to show support for our police departments. And we'll still put the, I have plenty of ribbon left. We still will put up blue bows. If anybody wants one, all you have to do is call my office or send me or my daughter a message on Facebook. And I also want to say that the city bus has been running with no complications. We are allowing one person on the bus at a time, and the bus is sanitized after each passenger gets off. The only time two people are able to ride the bus at the same time is if they live in the same house. There is no street pickup for the bus. You have to call our office, at which time you'll be asked a series of questions such as, do you have any symptoms relating to COVID-19? Do you have a temperature, headache, vomiting, coughing, sore throat, or any illness at all? Unfortunately, if you answer yes to any of these questions, you won't be able to ride the bus. Then when the rider is picked up, the same questions are asked, and we have a detailed law for contact tracing. And we are not providing a bus service for anybody that wants to go to a friend's house, who have to go to a business, or a bank, or a store, something like that, who has a protocol in place that you have to follow as well, so that, you know, you're not going to somebody's house and, you know, they may test positive and then you get back on our bus. So, and the bus is sanitized every time somebody gets in or out. Okay? And that's all I have for my reports.
Okay. May I ask a question? We get reimbursements from federal and, I think, county for transportation. Is that being, how's that being handled? Are they forthcoming? Are they not forthcoming?
Well, we really, well, we still do all our reports, but we really don't have much to report. I mean, for...
No, I understand that, but we...
We didn't have any expenses, really.
Years ago, or, you know, I'm only, probably it's changed. We would get, let's say from the county, for example, X amount a month. We basically have a contract with them. We get X amount a month.
Right.
And they would place the difference between our tolls and that amount. Is that still basically the case?
Yes, we do that, but like while this was all going on and the bus was not running, we really don't have much.
No, I know we don't, but does the county have a commitment to us for so much?
Yes, they do. I'm not sure exactly what that figure is. I can get that to you if you want.
Do they pay us that money or not? Or the feds or who?
Yeah, they're, yeah, they'll pay it to us. But it's not what it normally would be. I forget what that, how much they give us.
Okay, that's fine. I just want to know how that works.
Yeah.
All right.
But it isn't going to be much because we didn't use it.
Okay. I thought they made up the difference between whatever that number was in our fares, but this is why, again, I'm not familiar with the way it works now.
Yeah, I'd have to look at it to tell you exactly.
All right.
Thanks.
Oh, yeah, you can, where it's time. Okay. Thanks, Fred. Chief Rabbit?
For the month of June, we responded to 356 calls for service, made 49 arrests, issued 100 traffic tickets. We participated in a 4th of July crackdown over the holiday weekend, this past weekend. One of the things I wanted to address was fireworks in the city. We got a lot of complaints about fireworks in the city. We did wind up making a couple of arrests, two arrests, to be specific, about fireworks in the city. But I want to make the distinction, our city, our city charter and the penal law allows for arrests for fireworks. Well, the fireworks that people are buying and the tents that are set up in various retail establishments, those are sparkling devices, right? They've been re-categorized. There's a new definition, sparkling devices. That's what they fall under. Those are legal. Even though the city charter prohibits fireworks, it doesn't specifically prohibit sparkling devices. And from, from what I read on it, they can't even do that without the county doing it first. So those are legal, and, you know, we, we talked to some people about those, but obviously we know the distinction between the fireworks and the sparkling devices. We responded to numerous calls for them. Again, we made a couple of arrests, we confiscated some, but it seems to kind of have calmed down quite a bit since. Commissioner McGuire, you brought it up. I had it listed down here to say thank you and to your team. I know it wasn't just you, but thank you for the team for coming down for the, for the 518 Backs Their Blue. Very much appreciated at this time, especially, and everybody that got it. I don't know if anybody hit the lot of the...
No, we checked. They had lottery ticket. They had the daily number.
But they were at for the opportunity, okay? So thank you for that. That's all it.
Chief Dunn's not here. I know he's busy at the flood, and he'll give me his report. We will put it on the report from the state. Chief, Supervisor Richardson is not here, so we will move to public comment. Actually, Lynn, do you have anything to say?
I can talk.
All right. Public comment. Come up to the X. You have five minutes, and no getting back up again. Go ahead, Mary Lou.
Mary Lou Cibula, 28th East Street. The last city council meeting opened to the public was on March 11th. Now, a lot, a lot was going on back then, but with the pandemic, there's been no opportunity to address any of it, but Hattie Dwyane has made it no less important or relevant. I wanted to start with some general information. The New York State Committee on Local Government Overseas, among other things, how requests for public records should be processed. These requests are commonly referred to as FOILs. Public Officer is Law, Article 6, regarding freedom of information, which I was provided by Mark Seaver, outlines the requirements the city needs to follow when requests for information or FOILs submitted. Article 6 states, two very interesting things. The first is, is incumbent on the state's localities to extend public accountability wherever and whenever possible. Second, more importantly, is the people's right to know the process of governmental decision-making and to review the documents leading to determinations. Access to such information should not be cored it by shredding it with a quote of secrecy or confidentiality. The legislature therefore declares that the government is the public's business and that the public should have access to the records of the government in accordance with provisions of this article. I'm taking the time out of my very brief five minutes to read this because I think it's important for people to understand that everything each of us do, each of, each of you do, as part of the council in regards to city matters, is subject to disclosure to us. It is also important that taxpayers and residents of this city were able to easily connect the dots and understand how our local city government is functioning. And as we've all seen repeatedly on Facebook over the last few months, it is not functioning well. Why are required questions about accountability, cause for personal attacks, snarky responses, and arguments? Why would any council member respond, response be, "I don't know and I don't care"? The purpose of these meetings is to conduct the people's business in public, showing transparency and accountability, but what we see is a lack of communication and condescension, neither of which is then deemed this council or the residents that you serve. And this is just what we can be seeing, what we can see ongoing. Through the FOIL process, I have been looking into the abolishment of the title of desk officer and the new proposed administrative position, both of which I do not believe were properly explored or addressed prior to the shutdown. While this is certainly not the only or the most concerning matter going on with this city, it is a very good example of the deficiencies and issues that the city government seems to be experiencing. I have an advantage since I held the title of desk officer for 13 years prior to being abolished, so I understand the workings of the job itself, as well as all the parties involved around it. I know exactly what to look for. I also have the added advantage of no longer being a city employee under any restriction or concern for keeping my job. What I have in FOILing is documentation outlining the process of this council's decision regarding this matter. What path did they take and why did they take it? Both of which should be documented. What I have discovered is not only is there a lack of communication as an issue for the city council, but apparently a lack of documentation as well. So of the many questions that this issue raised, I'm going to start with this one. I'm just going to say and answer my first. Why was there no public notification prior, or forum prior to the city council vote on February 5th? Given the impact that the services to the city residents, I think they deserve to have this heads up and pass the public transparency and accountability. At the same February 5th council meeting, Mayor Baker stated there would be a contract with Saratoga County to handle our dispatch. All the commissioners voted on it with that understanding, but there isn't one. I know, I FOIL it, and Mayor Baker has since revealed the same in subsequent council meetings. Why was there no concern in regards to that? The same February meeting, Mayor Baker alluded to the cost benefit of Saratoga County taking over dispatch, although he didn't have the figures with him when he was asked how much would be saved. And as recent as the May city council meeting, Commissioner Seaver also referenced the cost, but apparently no cost analysis was ever done. I know, I FOIL it. Mayor Baker has stated it isn't about the money. Well, it's not, may not be the money to him, but I think a lot of fixed income taxpayers and mechanical would be about the money.
One minute, Mary Lou.
And in reference to the May 13 meeting, I sent an email to the entire city council on May 15th, and with the exception of Commissioner McGuire, who acknowledged the email, it was in regards to statements made by Mayor Baker at the May 13 meeting, no one else replied to it. I sent a reminder email in June, and to date, I've still forgotten to reply. So I just want to know why that is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next.
I just want to comment on this. On the meeting at May 5th, or February 5th, we didn't know, I didn't know, I'll speak for myself, I didn't know that that was going to be on the agenda until I read it. And I believe other people didn't know as well until they read it. So I just want to make that clear.
Next. Go ahead, Fred. Up on the X. So am I.
These are probably the only questions. What's going on on Wood Avenue?
As far as the...
They've been down, they've been working on that longer than I've ever seen a street work on.
And I have no control of actually what they're doing. That's nice, like maintenance in their own lines.
Okay.
They're doing...
And I know the city wasn't...
Yeah, they're doing latos into their own home. My only responsibility with them would be to give them permits to do so, but I can't stop them from maintaining their own lines, and that's basically all they're doing down there.
Okay.
And it has been a long tedious process, I'll say that, because it was four, don't quote me, I think it was four, maybe three residents that they were having a hard time getting into, but they can't turn the gas back on until they go inside because they have to make sure that the pressures are in compliance with the utilities inside, so there's not an explosion or fire or anything to that sort of...
The bus, one person, is that, is that a problem? Has that been any problem?
No, it has not been any problem. Everybody is cooperating. We get a lot of calls. People are happy that they are even back on the bus. So...
You determined that one person, you know?
Well, I called Town of Half Moon and I called, who else did I call? Called another municipality and asked them, you know, how are you guys handling this? What are you doing? And they're the ones who told me that they don't, you know, typically, if you wanted to go to your friend's house across town, you would call the bus and we would take you. And they're the ones who told me, don't do that, don't, because you don't know what's going on in that house, and then you're subjecting other people. So if we only limit them to going places who adhere to masks and have sanitizer, and then our people will be a lot safer. So I said, well, that's a great idea. They also said they don't bring people to hairdressers, but we only have two hairdressers in town who they, we generally go to. One has, because you can't wait, and people would have to wait to be called in. So they said, you know, you can't, we can't wait on the bus. People are waiting, so we can't sit there.
One of them does the bus.
Yeah, but I don't believe anybody has been there since...
No, I don't think she's been there either.
Yeah, no, we, we checked all our records. Nobody had been there.
We had somebody go in there and, her two weeks are up tomorrow. She's been fine, she's 95.
Oh, thank God. Yeah, so now we have not had one problem. Everybody is complying, and nobody has even made any complaints at all. They're very happy.
Thank you.
Yeah.
helpful for you, sir.
Gee, thanks. Two and a half minutes, though.
Just curious. This shouldn't be that long.
Yep.
I'm reading that somebody went with a low bid of, let's say, one and a half million dollars. The engineer, city engineer, is one and a quarter. What did we, what did we end up paying?
The engineer?
Were you going by the city's engineers or do you have to pay him what he put his bid in for?
You mean the grant for the engineer? They're paid out of that grant.
I'm saying, what, the bid price?
It's his price.
Okay. The low bid.
Yes.
I mean, it's kind of a big discrepancy.
We addressed that, we addressed it our last meeting with, we, we made an adjustment to the bond that we took out with the state EFC, and that was, one of the reasons was that. We anticipated that.
And the last thing is we have a missing commissioner.
Jody, Commissioner Goheini resigned, and there'll be somebody else running in November or more, however many people run in November. Mark is overseeing that office too, but with the deputy.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
I'm on 250 South Main Street. On January 2nd, 2020, I dropped off my first FOIL request at the council office. I also brought copies so that they could be date stamped for my records. They also date stamped the originals, which should help them keep track of what things in and when they are due, that sort of thing, here for the five-day response. On January 6th, I did get a response to my FOIL request, but it was not the information that I requested. This particular FOIL request was pretty simple, and all someone had to do was run the appropriate report from the VAS program and email to me. I received this response via email, as that is the way I get requested to receive responses. I then replied back to this email informing Mark that what he sent was not what I'd asked for. I got no response. I spoke with him about this matter, as well as other emails that I've sent, but not, but received no response to at the January 8th city council meeting. I was told that he had not received any emails from me. I continued to drop off FOIL requests at the council office. However, there was no set way that they were handled. Sometimes I would get a five-day response, and very often I would die. Sometimes I would get the information I requested, and sometimes I wouldn't receive anything. I repeatedly informed the city that although they could email me, my emails were somehow not making it through. It didn't matter which department I was emailing. For the record, this is the same email that I was using prior to 2018 to email the city and had absolutely no problem sending and receiving emails with everyone at the city. I've had no issues at any time using the same email to contact the New York State Contoler's office, the New York State Civil Service Office, Saratoga County, as well as many other municipalities and businesses. Once the city closed all the buildings to the public, I had no way of submitting FOIL requests. Since my email was clearly being blocked, I had no avenue to submit FOILs unless I wanted to mail them. Early, I, I'm sorry. I got an email in early May from Mark with responses to multiple FOILs, including one that I had submitted on January 17th. That's several months later. I just want to read something real quick here. I guess I have a copy of the address. So in case you're not aware, you're supposed to have, since the city has a website, per the committee on open government, you're supposed to have mechanism like Saratoga County does, so that someone can submit a FOIL request via, via the website. You guys do not have that. That would have been an avenue I could have used. So I've been denied my right to FOIL during this whole time. The lack of responses is appalling, and quite frankly, it's not my job to babysit FOIL requests once I drop them off. So I don't want to harp on that too long, so I want to get a couple of other things.
One and a half.
How much?
One and a half.
Thank you. So, Mark, let me get this out, and then you can explain, because it's harder here with the masks, obviously, but you had said that the city doesn't use E on the billing, even though the bill clearly says E equals estimate A equals actual. So my question is, we know for a fact that many, many accounts are estimated at any, you know, particular billing cycle. So my question is, as a resident, if my account were estimated, I have a legal right to know that you estimate in my account versus you actually got a reading off there. So I'm not clear as to why you're saying that no bills have E on them, when clearly we know for a fact multiple accounts have had to be estimated at this last cycle of addition. So I don't understand why the city is saying, you know, they don't put an E on there, because if you estimate in my account and you put A, I'm going to assume it's an actual reading. But if you didn't and it's an estimate, I have a legal right to know that, as does anyone else that happens to. Thank you.
Let me just address that real quick. If we were to do it electronically, the E would show up. We don't, we don't, you know as well as I do, we don't, the bills are printed off of... We don't, we don't, you know as well as I do, we don't, the bills are printed off of the VAS program, right? As I stated earlier, we do this kind of in fairness, so someone doesn't get penalized for maybe a leak they had in one of the billing cycles or something like that. And quite frankly, this has been going on for years. This is nothing that happened starting in January.
Right.
So it certainly happened previous to my being in office as well.
That's not the point. I don't want to judge you, but I don't want to, you know, have to see something on me to say. The whole point is that the E should be used when something's estimated. I'm not disputing the fact that they get estimated. That has to happen sometimes for multiple reasons.
Normally it's because someone, we can't get into a residence to do a reading, for whatever reason. You know, there are residents who just won't let you, we have a list of residents who will not still let us put that, the reader outside. And again, this summer, we're making a real effort to, we're going to make a real effort to make sure legally that we can get in and get these things done.
Yeah, for the charter legally, you absolutely could have done something already. It's not disputing that they get estimated. We all know that.
Well, quite frankly, I was waiting for our new attorney, because I wanted, obviously she needs to be involved.
So no one would have an opportunity, no one would know that their bill was estimated?
Um, that's...
You would have no idea?
That is correct.
So you would have no recourse? You would just say, "Oh, jeez."
Well, if your bill is out of whack...
Well, who would, you know, some people don't pay attention. I mean, it shouldn't be up to you to say, "Oh gee, that doesn't look right. Well, maybe I used a lot of water. Maybe I washed my car 50 more times this year than last year. How would you know?"
We don't make judgments based on whether we think you used too much water or not. If we think there's...
No, I'm saying if I got a bill that was actually estimated and not actual, how would I know that something was a muck and that I should go down to you and say, "Listen, this is not right"?
You wouldn't know if something was a muck if you estimated. The reason we don't estimate nine times, 99 times out of 100 is because we can't get access to your meter. We don't do it for any other reason. Now, if someone is out of whack, example, again, they have 4,000 this and 10, one cycle and the next cycle they have 10,000, we contact DPW, they go out and do the reading again or make sure it's not a bad reader, or if it's too low, we do the same thing on the other side. So we address individual problems. But for the most, for the most part, we, when it's an estimate, is we can't get readings. That's the reason for that.
Wait, I'm not questioning why you're estimating the fact that it's done. We all know that. That has nothing to do with that.
Right.
That's maybe I'm not saying correctly. What I'm saying is that the bill says, you know, E equals estimate, A equals actual on the bill, but no one's getting an E. So what I'm saying is that if you're estimating, Dennis is estimating, he's going to want to know that you did an estimated reading. Okay, there's a reason, we don't care why it was done, because obviously there's a reason that it has to happen. I get that. But if you're estimating it was account, they have a legal right to know that you estimated their account. So when they all say A for actual, that's a lie. That's dishonest.
Well, how about this scenario? Say you have an estimated reading, and then, you know, two months later, somebody gets to actually read the thing, read the meter, and then your next bill is corrected because this was estimated, this was actual. And you're like, "You don't know."
May I for a second?
That says A, that says A. That's not right. People need to know if their bill is estimated or actual, just like NISAG. When you get your bill from NISAG, sometimes it's estimated, sometimes it's actual. They do that for a reason. So you can, you know, say, you know, "What if somebody's taken water from your house" or, you know?
If I may for a second?
Mark, I think the question at hand is more of an identifier on the bills.
I understand what the question is.
So I just think maybe you should sit down...
It's something that's been going, and I'm not saying it's right or wrong, I'm just saying something's going on for years.
No, 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 I'm not saying that either. I just think moving forward, since I'm ahead of the water, I just think what we need to do is just sit down and figure out a way to implement an identifier on these bills from this point forward. It's that simple, and it answers the question, correct?
The program has to be able to do it though.
It does. The program does, but as I explained earlier...
The answer to your question, correct?
If it's a...
The program can do it if you allow the program to do the estimating. What we have found is, the way our office estimates is you go back over to three similar billing cycles. People tend to use more water in the summer, okay? So we don't do a fall, a summer, and a fall necessarily. We'll do three, the last three fall readings, just to make it kind of fair, because that's, we just, you know, that's the amount of water you're typically using in that timeframe. Now, if you, as I said earlier, if there's a glitch in there, if you had a leak for one quarter and your reading went way up, if you do it electronically, now, let's say you have a four, a 10, and a four, that's 18, over three, that's 6,000, okay? Well, if we went back three cycles and it was a four, a four, and a four, you're getting overbilled. And what we're trying to do is stop people from getting overbilled. It's a fairness issue, as much as everything else. Now, should there be something to identify? I will see what we can do and continue to do it manually as we do it.
I mean, can't you pull the bill out and cross off A and put an E? Or have a little slip-up paper that you put in there that says, "This bill is estimated and not actual," so that people, there's transparency? People...
I will address it again tomorrow.
Guys, you can only talk one at a time, because he's trying to record over there. We're trying to record the meeting. One person at a time. Go ahead.
No, I'm just saying, it's not, it's not, I understand the issue. And I'll look in, starting tomorrow, look and see if there's a way we can address it.
Thank you. Barb?
And still keep it fair for the, you know, for the user.
Barb, you got anything else? Anthony?
I was just going to say, if we can't get an E or an A on the bill, we can actually put the word...
We'll get an A.
It's not estimated or actual. I mean, there's got to be a way around it.
All right, we'll figure it out.
Okay, next.
Well, that's the biggest problem.
Please identify yourself, give your address.
I just wanted to use this five minutes to see if we can get any answers for Mary Lynn and my mother's responses to the four questions before. And if you'd like, I can review the questions for you.
Nope, I have no comment today, then.
No, no? Bye-bye.
Thank you. Next? Um? Nothing? Nobody? All right, then we will go to resolutions. Mark, you got that?
Resolution 5720, whereas the term of a member of the City Mechanical Zoning and Planning Board of Appeals has expired, and therefore be resolved that the mayor is authorized to reappoint Robert Chase to a one-year term expiring May 3rd, 2021, to the City Mechanical Zoning and Planning Board of Appeals. I'll introduce.
I'll second it.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Seaver? Yes. Commissioner Gotti?
Yes.
Commissioner McGuire?
Yes.
Resolution 5820, whereas it is necessary for the city to retain an independent legal counsel to represent the city in labor and employment matters involving the city and its employees. Whereas the Jeffrey Honeywell Law Firm has represented the city on issues regarding employees for the past several years, where the firm has presented a contract or service for the, from the Honeywell Law Firm, for a sum of $15,000, which is the same fee the city had paid in 2019. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Mechanical City Council authorizes and directs the mayor to sign the contract with Honeywell Law Firm for legal services.
I'll make a motion?
I'll second it.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver, yes. Commissioner Gotti?
Yes.
Mr. McGuire?
Yes.
Whereas the City Mechanical owns and maintains various parks for the use and enjoyment of its residents and visitors, including De Nier Park. And whereas the city council desires to provide volunteer opportunities for the Veterans Motorcycle Club to participate in the care and maintenance of the city's park known as De Nier Park. And whereas the Veterans Motorcycle Club have offered to paint the gazebo when necessary, trim the bushes, bring in mulch, hang flowers every Memorial Day, keep the American flag displayed in excellent condition at all times, install a concrete walkway to the gazebo, and mow the lawn if needed, and install a VMC plaque. And now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of Mechanical establishes that the Veterans Motorcycle Club has adopted De Nier Park. And be it further resolved that the City Mechanical will take the necessary actions to resume maintaining this property in the event that the Veterans Motorcycle Club cannot continue to do so.
Can I add one thing to that real quick? Just like to say, and I'd like everybody to know, that they've been doing it for the last two years flawlessly. They've been down there, they've done a remarkable job with it. I think this is, they deserve it.
Okay.
I need a motion.
Barb, you ready to add?
Yeah.
Anthony, second it. Barb, ready?
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver, yes. Commissioner Gotti?
Yes.
Mr. McGuire?
Yes.
Resolution 6020, whereas the City of Mechanical has received funding from New York State Environment and Facilities Corporation to complete the water system improvements to replace the water main for the water plant to the Devol Road tanks. Whereas contract documents were prepared by Barton La Judas, Title Contract 5, General Construction Water Main Replacement Project, to the Devol Road tanks, and the project was bid publicly in compliance with the New York State procedure on procurement with bids due August 22nd, 2019. Whereas five bids were received, and the lowest bid was from Bellamy Construction Company with a bid of $1,426,130. The engineer's estimate is $1,229,700. Whereas the city accepts the bid of Bellamy and awards the contract to Bellamy and authorizes the mayor to execute an agreement with Bellamy Construction. I need a motion.
So move.
I'll second it.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver, yes. Commissioner Gotti?
Yes.
Mr. McGuire?
Yes.
Resolution 6120, payroll vouchers for sewer water general fund of $171,912.77, and with the expenditure breakdown of $736,874.79. I'll introduce.
I'll second it.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver, yes. Commissioner Gotti?
Yes.
Mr. McGuire?
Yes.
Resolution 6220, whereas Mechanical City Council adopted their 2020 annual budget on December 15th, 2019, and whereas the city council now wishes to amend set ordinance with the following transfer of budget balances. Therefore be it resolved that for the 2020 budget, we wish to approve the following budget amendment. And this is transferring, there's $80,000 on a contractual line in the law department of the budget, the law line. We're taking $20,000 of it and put it in the personnel line, since we hired Lynn as an attorney on staff. So that's the reason for it. I'll introduce.
I'll second it.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver, yes. Commissioner Gotti?
Yes.
Commissioner McGuire?
Yes.
And I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion to reissue or revisit the...
Minutes?
The minutes. I want a motion to accept the amendments of the previous meeting on June 10th, 2020. I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver, yes. Commissioner Gotti?
Yes.
Commissioner McGuire?
No.
That's it.
All right, anybody have any new business?
Another, another serious omission. I do.
Go ahead.
As a person who walks all over Mechanical streets numerous times a week, it seems as though there are many homeowners who would benefit from us bringing back the sidewalk program. Obviously, this is a bad time economically for homeowners, but maybe in the spring, if things return to normal and people are back to work, it should be something we might think about doing for homeowners. If you walk around the city, you see there are many sidewalks that are in disrepair, and the residents might want to take advantage of such a program. And the last time we had it, from what I remember, it was well-received and a big success. So, I mean, there are a lot of really bad sidewalks around the city, and I know that it's really, really expensive to repair your sidewalks, and this program would really, you know, I know now, nobody has any money, things are, you know, not good. But maybe in the spring, we should think about getting that back together and seeing